Okay, so I don't have to push anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, you all ready?
Let's do it.
You ready? Good evening and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. I want to take a moment to explain, you'll see that we're one member short. Vice Mayor Soden and also our city manager, Tom Marcus, are in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for the next day or so to attend the National League of Cities Conference. We'll be representing the community and the commission and the staff. So we'll go ahead and begin. And they are supposed to be joining us by telephone. So if you hear their voices appear, you'll know that they're here and they'll participate that way. So we'll go ahead and begin. First item on the agenda are proclamations, and the first is to proclaim Thursday, November 17, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. I know we have representatives here this evening. Speak. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Michelle Fender and I'm here for my yearly pancreatic cancer advocacy. Yes, I am here to get a proclamation for November 17th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. And I think this cause is very important because my husband passed away from pancreatic cancer three and a half years ago. And fifty-three thousand, more than fifty-three thousand Americans will be diagnosed this year. And seventy-one percent of them will die within the first year. Ninety-two percent of them will die within five years. This year pancreatic cancer has surpassed breast cancer to become the third-leading cancer cause of death. And it is on its way to becoming the number two deadliest cancer in America. And so by proclaiming November 17th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day, you help bring attention to this so we can get awareness out and more research and hopefully progress.
Well, let's hope by doing our little part with proclamation can lead to the necessary research and cure one of these days for pancreatic cancer. I know that it is a disease that affects so many families and not just an individual who is terrible, somebody has to go through, but families that have to go along with it. So our deepest sympathies again and be happy to read the proclamation. Whereas in 2016, an estimated fifty-three thousand and seventy people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty people will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to become the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer death by the year 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just eight percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages and seventy-one percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of diagnosis. And whereas approximately three hundred and ninety deaths will occur in Kansas in 2016. And whereas there'll be an estimated four hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2020. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Lawrence, Kansas are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 17, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the City of Lawrence, Kansas. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is to proclaim November 12th through December 24th as the Salvation Army Christmas Kettle Season. Lieutenant, how are you?
Good, how are you, Mayor?
Good.
Thank you for your time this evening. You'll know that the Salvation Army works throughout the year to help the disadvantaged throughout our community, not only Lawrence but in Douglas, the whole of Douglas County. And the kettle season is our single largest fundraiser and it has a deep heritage. For me personally, I have a picture of my great-grandfather in 1914 ringing bells for the Salvation Army in Wichita, Kansas. His last name was Amick, A-M-I-C-K, interesting tidbit, but also a rich heritage in Lawrence. We've been ringing bells here for as long as the kettles have been around, a hundred years probably. Mayor Amick may remember when we started that. So I do appreciate the support of the city, not only with this proclamation, but throughout the year and helping us to help the community. Thank you.
You bet. And I was there. Well, I'm happy to do this, Matt, and I look forward to seeing you and so many people in the community that are out giving of their time in helping the Salvation Army with the cause and being able to help so many people as you do. And we appreciate the true service that you provide, you know, people in our community. And look forward to any way that I can help. So with that, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, whereas the Salvation Army in Lawrence, Kansas began in 1886, right after me. And whereas the Salvation Army has been providing services to the poor, lonely and destitute of our community for over a hundred years. And whereas the Salvation Army will continue to serve and administer to the needs of our community. And whereas the Salvation Army will continue to faithfully serve with heart to God and hand to man. Now therefore, I Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 12th through December 24th, 2016, as Salvation Army Christmas Kettle Season. Matt, thank you very much and look forward to any help in the future. Okay, and our last proclamation is to proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2016, as Small Business Saturday. Sally?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is my favorite time of year when I get to come up here and tell everybody that we are so glad that you are supporting Small Business Saturday. I am very, very pleased and privileged to lead Downtown Lawrence Incorporated, which is our downtown business association. Nearly 200 independent and franchise small businesses make up Downtown Lawrence, Inc. I like to say that DLI is a family of family businesses. We have business owners who are in their third or fourth generation running businesses on Mass Street, Vermont, New Hampshire, and our other side streets. They are so proud every day. They work harder than anyone, as you know, and actually, most of you here are or have been small business owners, so you know what the life of a small business owner is. Want to point out that small businesses, and you have some of the statistics in your proclamation, but small businesses have created eight million jobs since 1990. Franchise small businesses employ roughly eight million people and make up forty percent of all American retail jobs. Small businesses donate 250% more than larger businesses to nonprofits and community causes. And every business owner or nonprofit leader on Mass Street can tell you, we are solicited on a daily basis, multiple times, and we are very happy to contribute to so many community organizations throughout the year. If you spend a hundred dollars at a local business, roughly sixty-eight dollars stays in your local community. If you spend the same at a large business, only forty-three dollars stays in the local economy. So small businesses play a tremendous role in our general economy here in our community. This year, it's projected that seventeen point eight billion dollars will be spent this Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 26. That's an increase of over 10% over last year. And shoppers now care as much about the shopping experience as the gifts they get. So this puts small business owners, and we have the best right here in Downtown Lawrence, as an advantage. I do also want to point out that our Downtown Lawrence gift card program, we changed over and started a new gift card program exactly one year ago today. To date, we have funded a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in gift cards. That has resulted in over ninety-three thousand dollars in direct spending at over a hundred and twenty participating member businesses. We still have six weeks to go in the year and we project to sell another eighty thousand. That will be about seventy-five thousand dollars over last year. So we are putting money directly back into the economy. When you support a local business, you're not just supporting that business, you're supporting that business owner's family, their employees, and the community via sales tax that's generated, goes to our general fund, supports schools, supports roads, supports all kinds of projects. And we are very, very pleased at the role that small businesses in Downtown Lawrence play in that. Thank you.
Sally, thank you and thank you for all the hard work that you do to provide assistance and promotion for all the businesses in downtown. And, you know, we are a collection of small businesses in downtown and same as this body here, being involved with small businesses ourselves. And, you know, we understand it's truly, you know, the backbone of what we do every day and the folks that we try to help. So thank you very much for that and I'd be happy to read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, whereas the City of Lawrence recognizes the value and importance of small businesses to the local, regional, and national economy. And whereas Downtown Lawrence Incorporated participates in the nationally-recognized Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 26, 2016, in an effort to encourage residents to support the local business community first as part of their annual holiday shopping traditions. And whereas according to the Small Business Administration, there are 23 million small businesses in America which account for 54% of all U.S. sales. And whereas our community understands the important contribution small businesses make to their communities, as elected leaders and small business owners or supporters ourselves, we encourage Lawrence residents to take time to shop small this holiday season. And whereas Downtown Lawrence Incorporated and the City of Lawrence are both working to create an environment which is fun and festive for the holiday shopping season, we look forward to the many holiday events, including Santa's Rescue atop Weaver's Department Store. That is a big one for everybody. I want to say that. The holiday lighting ceremony and the opening of the Parks and Recreation Department's outdoor ice skating rink, all of which will be held on Friday, November 25, 2016. Additionally, we welcome the Lawrence Old Fashioned Christmas Parade and the Winter Wonder Weekend, both during the weekend of December 3rd and 4th, 2016. Now therefore, I Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2016, as Small Business Saturday. And the City of Lawrence encourage all citizens of Lawrence to shop small and support local downtown events and businesses this holiday season. Sally, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and all items listed on the consent agenda to be considered under one motion will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for separate consideration? Excuse me a second. Vice Mayor, are you there? Nope. Okay. No answer. So any items that a member of the commission would like to have removed? Okay. Any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay, hearing none. We need to add to the consent agenda, the total claims to 204 vendors and the amount of thirteen million eighty thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. That did include bond payments, estate, treasure, and then construction contract for Garnet Companies also that was in there. So anyway, with the addition of claims, I would entertain a motion of approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Larson. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is general public comment. Public is allowed to speak to any of the items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. As general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. Is there any general public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Ted Boyle, President of North Lawrence Improvement Association, and I'd like to talk to you about a problem with that we're having in North Lawrence, a new problem, removal of North Lawrence soil and the clay, orange clay being dumped in the holes to replace it. And this happened, development over on 700 Block of Lincoln, and it's been under this development for about five or six years. It goes all the way back to when the library was being built. And this developer contractor bought this property and dug these large holes on this property. It's kind of a large property. It's going to have nine houses on it, which he started building those. I think four of them are on there now and they're really, they're going to turn out really well and lowered them down to where they were supposed to be. But in the process, what happened is he dug these big holes behind, on the property, but behind the hill, the mound of dirt. And of course, the residents down there kept North Lawrence Improvement informed on that. And what he did was took the North Lawrence soil out of these holes. Now these holes were big enough to back in full-size dump trucks with a backhoe and never see them. That's how deep it was. Now, then the soil would be sold. Oh, some of it went to Tonganoxi to a big housing development there. The city even bought some for the project over on the river trails, which, you know, you don't know where you get your dirt from, but you know, that's not the problem. The problem is, any other part of town, this might be acceptable, but as you all know, North Lawrence and the water problem that we have over there, and we've just alleviated a big, major problem with putting that six-million-dollar pump online here a month ago. And now though, this infill of this clay into the ground, and I've talked to Matt Bond about this, and he's on board with this, but you dig this large hole or trench and you take out the North Lawrence soil, but, and the water can pass through it because water goes under North Lawrence 365 days a year. I mean, there's water, you can dig in places in North Lawrence 12 to 15 feet and you get all the water you want. And it's groundwater that travels underneath there to the river. Well, when you take that North Lawrence soil out of there and you put this clay in there, it becomes a barricade. It becomes an obstacle that the water cannot go through. So it has to go up above. And of course, this soil over in North Lawrence is 50 feet deep, 50 feet, and then it hits bedrock. And so they dig these holes 15, 20 feet deep and 100 feet long and then took the dirt out from under the library, the clay, and also the projects down on Ninth and New Hampshire, had to get rid of that dirt somewhere. So let's take it over to North Lawrence and dump it in a hole over there. And let's take the North Lawrence soil and sell it to somebody else. And, you know, North Lawrence soil, type one, type two soil, you know, has always been very, very popular. Sometimes people get buckets and get it.
Okay, Ted, and tell you what, we're going to direct staff to look at this along with you, okay? We'll have them contact you and we'll get some answers to this and we'll get it back on our agenda.
Okay, Matt Bond is, last night was our neighborhood meeting and Matt was over to help us celebrate the new pump, you know. And, but before that meeting, I had brought him up to speed on this problem that we have. And, you know, we do have a policy that is, regulates how much of that soil you can bring on the top of the lot, but nothing underground, see? And so it's a way of getting around a lot of that. But other parts of the county or the city, you know, that might be perfectly acceptable because those areas don't have this groundwater going under their properties 365 days a year. So, and Matt knows about it, if you talk to him, he'll bring you up. The other deal is, is I'd like to know how residents would like to know, I should say, how the noise problem is working out on the elevators because we've seen it's been two weeks, two weeks since I was up here the last time talking about that. Sound like a jet's taken off on the north side of the elevator and nothing has been done or even seen anybody stirring over there. You guys need to drive over there during the day when this is on and you'll see what these residents are putting up with, you know. And this happens every season during harvest. And, you know, they could put a blind up there, park some railroad cars up there, or run stacks up the side of the elevators. And the noise, they did that on the east end three years ago, four years ago, when we got to complaining about it. But then they put higher volume, higher pressure fans to keep that dust out of those silos. So, man, we really need something done. These people are having a problem with that. The other deal that I'd just like to bring up is, have we made any choices on where the temporary fire department's going to be?
I don't believe so.
You know, so I'll, I'll be back.
We'll get you some answers to all those things, okay?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate it, Mike, and the commission, so.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, that's it.
Is there any other general public comment? Okay, back. We are on to the regular agenda. The, again, the public will be allowed to speak on any of the regular agenda items or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their name and address. The speaker should address all comments or questions to the commission. The first item on the agenda is to consider the following items that are related to the here project, and it's to consider adoption on second and final reading, ordinance 9300, and consider adoption and second and final reading on item number 9301. Scott, Vice Mayor's not here. I'm going to ask the commission to defer this thing to our next regular agenda meeting because you told us yesterday it has to have four positive votes of the numbers assembled. And because we had a split the last time, I think that that's what we ought to do. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Apologize to any members of the public that came this evening, but with the Vice Mayor not being here tonight as of yet because he's in transit to her site in Pittsburgh for the NLC meeting, I think it's probably unfair to the neighbors and to everybody around because it's got to have four positive votes, okay? So I would entertain a motion then to defer all of item number one until our next regular meeting. And we can place this on, as the first agenda item, okay? So I'd entertain a motion for deferral. Motion made in second to defer item number one. All of item number one was made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That item passes, hell, that item passes four oh. It was the deferral. I gave up too easy. Okay, thank you. Donnie? Next item on the agenda is consider adopting on second reading, ordinance number 9304, established in the revitalization area and approving the neighborhood revitalization area plan for 826 Pennsylvania Street. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute the, excuse me, the necessary agreements. Diane, you have additional comments?
Just very briefly, Mayor, since your action last week, where the commission passed this on first reading at the 50% tenure level, it was considered by Douglas County in terms of its participation last week. The county did vote on a vote of three to zero to have their participation at the 85% level for a tenure period. Last evening, the school board also considered its participation. They did vote on a six oh vote to authorize their participation at the 50% level in accordance with the city's action last week. They did, however, provide a caveat in the motion that in the event that the city changed its participation level, they, they enabled the ability to revisit that item. So this evening, I would suggest that if the, if the commission wished to pass this at the 50% level, this item could be completed this evening. If for some reason the commission wished to consider a different amount, you may wish to defer the second reading of the item in order to allow the opportunity for the school board to revisit the matter, if that would be appropriate. I will mention that Britt Crumcano, who's the city's economic development coordinator, is, I believe, on the line in the event that there's any technical questions. But other than that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Britt, is that you on the phone?
She may have it muted.
Tom, is that you?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Oh, it's Britt.
Britt.
So Britt, do you have any additional information other than, I don't know if you could hear Diane's comments, but we can, if we agree at the 50% level, we can do the second final reading tonight. If we're going to make any change, it's going to, it's got to go back and be back, what, in a couple of weeks or so?
Yes, if that would be your desire, that would offer the opportunity for them to reconsider it.
Okay. So I believe that one of us or some of us said that if they were looking at doing some change to meet lead, was that something that was to be considered?
Discussion wasn't, no, thanks.
I'm happy with the, with that.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Matt Goff with Barbara Emerson Law Firm, Commissioners. I'm here tonight on behalf of Williams' management. I'm joined by Adam Williams, the owner of the applicant. At the meeting on November 1st, Commissioner Larson expressed a willingness to look at 85%. And one of the things that you asked if was possible to do would be to look at some sort of a lead-type building standard.
Actually, I had indicated that I would look at a different number, not necessarily 85%. I did not say that.
A different number than 85%?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Or 50%, that's what we were talking about at the time.
Okay, well, I just wanted to mention that it was hard on November 1st to agree to a, build a project that would meet lead standards without knowing what the cost was to do that. And since that And since that time, we've had a chance to look at what that entails. And if the city were to agree to an eighty-five percent abatement, then the applicant would be willing to construct the project to minimum lead standards without obtaining the certification. It would be verified by the applicant's architect and reviewed by the city staff. And wanted to mention that in case it had any impact on the decision that was made on the first, and would reiterate that the project at eighty-five percent was found to be reasonable by the outside consultant, Tom Jackson, and was supported by the cost benefit analysis, was supported by the county. The school district really expressed no preference over fifty or eighty-five percent. They did express quite a bit of deference to the city commission. But we believe that this is an infill historic project that creates jobs, it creates affordable housing, it meets so many goals of the community, and with the lead construction, it would meet yet another, and we hope that merits your consideration at eighty-five percent.
Well, I appreciate that very much. I do appreciate you looking into that and coming back with consideration. If you were to add the lead on there, I probably could go another five percent, and that'd be about it. Because personally, my personal opinion is that I think any project that we give incentives to on, such as, such as these types of apartments and so forth, I think we ought to be doing lead buildings, I really do. Not necessarily certification, but at least build to those standards. So, you know, I could, I could go up that much on that. And the other thing I think I spoke about was about the jobs and the health insurance because it seemed to, I mean, I appreciate you offering the health insurance because I know that's hard for a small business. I've been there, done that. But it just seems to me it would behoove us to have employers that provide insurance for all of their employees, or offered at least.
Thank you for mentioning that. The forum, the application forum that is completed for all these projects asks those questions about the jobs onsite and the estimate of the payroll and the estimate of benefits. And I'd clarify again that this applicant is the owner of the building, not the operator of the first floor. So to the extent we're talking about the salaries of folks working at a restaurant, that's a different entity that makes the decision. And so that, that was the hesitation towards agreeing to requirements when it's not the same.
I thought we were talking like eleven positions eventually. Is that correct?
Right, but it's the operator of the restaurant that would be the employer of most of them.
The jobs aren't being created by the building.
Except for the administration of the apartments.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'd be pleased to answer.
Any other questions, Matt?
Yeah, so does that mean that if we agree at fifty percent that the building is not being built? And I know that it said it wasn't going to seek lead, but that it was going to be built to the lead standard minus the lead certificate. So at fifty percent, it won't even be built to the lead standard?
As we said on November first, the building code in effect today gets us fairly close. There's a lot of things in it that have efficiency standards that enable a project to get almost to that minimum threshold, but not quite. And so it's that increment, that incremental difference that you're probably looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, do you have anything?
I would just, I would just talk about the five percent.
Could we have your name too?
Adam Williams, applicant. The five percent doesn't justify the cost to go to lead. There's a, there's a gap in between. The eighty-five percent gives us enough room to justify it. At five percent, we're building a bigger gap. So, I would just say that we probably wouldn't be interested at the, at the extra five percent just for that very reason.
Okay.
That's why we're asking for the eighty-five, to make that happen.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh. I'm speaking for the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. I just have a couple of brief questions. And so I don't forget, what Adam just said about the five percent wouldn't allow them to go to the lowest lead level, I'm just wondering if that means it wouldn't cover the costs of applying for that versus the costs of building to that level but without the certification? So, does that make sense?
I didn't think they were going for certification.
Right, okay, so it must mean, doesn't, okay, for the cost, okay, never mind. Last night at the East Lawrence meeting, we had our election, we didn't have a formal discussion, but many people were talking about the brewery. And two questions keep coming up, so we still need to know what happened to having parking across the street in the gravel lot. They were going to lease land from Tony Krasnick. And when they came to East Lawrence, they talked about that, and that didn't, there were a lot of other things to be talked about last time when it was talked about here, and I brought it up. But we still need to know because there are concerns that the polar parking is not going to be sufficient. But perhaps Scott can clear that one up. The other thing is when they came to East Lawrence, Adam described, I believe it's on the second story, outdoor area, there was a party area, but it wasn't going to be like here incorporated or anything. It was going to be just for a few times of year, having outdoor parties or something. So people wondered, is that still part of the program? Do we need to talk about noise, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Williams?
The second floor that she's referring to, the terrace area, is for residents only. Nobody from the restaurant brewery are allowed up there. And that's where that, where that ends.
Okay.
The parking across the street, we don't own that, that property over there. What they do with that property, we don't know. We have, we have no information about it. What we do know is we've met all the requirements for parking for our project on Pennsylvania.
Any other public comment? Okay, back to the commission. So let me make sure that I have this right, Adam. If five percent, the five percent is not worth meeting or going through that process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And our code is in place, and our code is supposed to meet a majority of the things that are there, so.
It is, yeah. I think Scott's doing some work on that, yes.
Okay. Well, questions or comments? Because I, I think that we're probably at the fifty percent as was negotiated before.
Yeah, I'm fine with fifty percent.
You know, Perks made recommendation at eighty-five. County was at eighty-five, school district is following our, our deal at fifty. So, you know, the, we can take care of this project tonight, at least from our end, from the incentive package, and we go ahead and adopt on, on second and final reading the ordinance number ninety-three oh four, which establishes the percentage at fifty percent. So, is that where we're at?
That's where I'm at, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I expressed my concerns the last time about the affordable housing.
Okay. And that's fine. Okay, well, I'd like to see it be a little bit higher, but you know, it's one of those things.
I would note, for what it's worth, in the, going back and looking at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board minutes, the, the project was said that the market rate for these one bedrooms was a thousand to twelve hundred dollars. And in phone calls this week with landlords throughout the city, I've been unable to find a one-bedroom apartment in Lawrence, Kansas that rents for a thousand dollars. So, for what that's worth.
I must be doing something wrong.
I did do the tour of eight-eight-eight up here, just looked at some of the different apartments up there. Now, they have, the one bedrooms are right up in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms are twelve hundred on up. So, you're just, yeah. I couldn't afford it.
I know, I couldn't afford it.
I mean, it's nice, it's good for them.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion then to adopt on second and final reading ordinance number nine-three-oh-four, establishing the revitalization area and approving the neighborhood revitalization area plan for eight-twenty-six Pennsylvania Street and authorize city manager to execute the necessary agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Bowley. Any questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Leslie, you there? Nope, passes three to one. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to conduct the following items related to, consider the following items related to historic resources, conduct a public hearing, consider recommendations from Historic Resources Commission to designate the following properties as landmark, landmarks on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, eleven-oh-six Rhode Island, eight-nineteen Avalon, and ten-twenty-eight Rhode Island Street. Lynn?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Lynn Braddock Zollner, Historic Resources Administrator for the city. Trying to make PowerPoint my friend. Let's see, there we go. Okay. This evening, I'd like to share just a little bit of Lawrence history with you based on the city's growth and, of course, architecture. This evening, we have three individual nominations and one historic district for your consideration. All of the properties have been reviewed by the Historic Resources Commission and have been found to meet the criteria established as identified in chapter twenty-two. The Lawrence Preservation Alliance should be noted here as they've been working with properties throughout the city for owners with historic properties to encourage them to list their properties on the Lawrence Register. And tonight's properties, each of these owners have participated with LPA in some way. There's a map showing the location of the landmarks. It's kind of zoomed out a little bit because we're spread over the city. All the way to the east, we have two properties, individual nominations on Rhode Island Street. The Johnson Block is between Eighth, Eighth Street and Ninth Street on Arkansas and Missouri. And then way over to the west for us, yes?
I just announced that we were looking at the three individual properties. Do we need to consider the Johnson Block at the same time?
If it pleases the commission, that's probably the easiest.
Do you guys want to consider it all at one time? Okay. So we will add, you know, the Johnson Block, I guess it is, the historic district consisting of the number of houses that are there. I won't read them all, but anyway, okay. Just so everybody knows.
My apologies. That's fine. On the west, we have eight-nineteen Avalon Road, which is pretty far west for historic properties as we watch the city grow and properties turn fifty years or older, we're starting to move that historic area a little bit to the west. The first property that I would like to introduce to you this evening is the Johnson Block Historic District. As I mentioned, it is the eight-hundred block of Missouri and Arkansas streets. I know this is a little cluttered. I wanted to give you a feel for the different types of architecture that exist in the district. We have two to revive, Will and Queen Anne, and Four Square, and Prairie, and Craftsman. We've got some great architectural examples there. The district is being nominated under both criteria one and six. Criteria one is for the development of the city of Lawrence, and then criteria six is for the architecture. Criteria one, for the growth and development of Lawrence, is pretty interesting. There was some information in your packet, and developer actually assembled this block to specifically create a subdivision that had restrictions so he could build his house there and semi-control what was built around him. And this was Victor Johnson, and he built the house that's on the corner of Ninth and Missouri that's shown in the middle of your map. The subdivision had setbacks and many restrictions like we would consider today in new subdivisions. And my favorite was one, it was kind of like what we have now, is an agreement not to protest because he said that anyone who bought in the subdivision had to agree not to protest against the road being paved. So, this is nominated for its growth and development and the architecture. Historic districts are unique. They have contributing and non-contributing elements. On the left side of the screen is a district map. All the light blue colors are contributing structures. The two red parcels are non-contributing structures. And then on the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a key contributing structure that is Victor Johnson's house. To the right of this was our analysis, and we actually did look at some of the numbers for this analysis. So a little bit of it's changed from what you have in your information because I went back and took out the alley property that was included in the overall land area. And when I did those calculations, the percentages were almost the same. So there are twenty-four properties in the district. Fifteen of the twenty-two properties, or sixty-eight percent of the owners are in support, and sixty-six, point six-six percent of the total land area within the proposed district support the nomination. We had two individuals that owned property in the district that did not support the nomination. Two of the properties at the time this was going through the Historic Resources Commission were in transition. They were for sale or being sold. And then we had three properties where we received absolutely no contact from the property owners, and we did do three different mailings, so. On the left again, you'll see that earlier list of who was for and who supports and who doesn't. On the right in this screen, what you see is the way chapter twenty-two is written, is that if you don't file a written protest, you are considered to support the nomination. So, there was only one owner that filed a written protest. That information was in your packet. He owns eight-point-three-three percent of the entire land area. The, the other property owner that was not in favor of the district did not file a written protest. So that means ninety percent of the owners and eighty-seven percent of the property owners in portions of the land for the block are in support of the district. The next property we're going to look at this evening is eight-nineteen Avalon Road. It's the Mugen residence. It was built around eighteen-sixty-six, and from what we can tell, they started adding on pretty quickly after that. Apparently, they built too small and they had their first addition within the first three years. Mr. Mugen was actually a survivor of Quantrell's raid, and he was a stonemason, and it is likely that he is the one that constructed the house. This property is also being nominated under criteria one and six for the development of the city of Lawrence and for its architecture. It's significant under the development of the city of Lawrence. It was actually outside the city limits when it was built and had a large parcel of land. And as the city pushed west, that land was divided off. And so many of the homes around it are quite modern. And so it's a little unique to see it in this setting. But it is showing that development of Lawrence to the west and how the large parcels were sectioned down to have more normal, modern sections. And then, of course, its architecture with the wonderful stonework. This is the Rody De La Fuente House. Some of you may recognize this house. It used to be eleven-oh-six Rhode Island. The property has been replatted since it went through the Historic Resources Commission, and it's now identified as eleven-hundred Rhode Island Street. The little structure you see on the left was the original house. We think that it was built around eighteen-seventy-one. It is a vernacular structure. We've spent a lot of time speaking about vernacular structures lately. But it does have some Greek Revival influences in it that makes it a little unique. It is listed in the National Register of Historic Places with the East Lawrence, actually the North Rhode Island Historic District, that was listed in two thousand and four. It's only listed under criterion one. When we started going through this process, the property had some challenges, and it has since been totally rehabilitated. But we're still moving forward for criterion one, mainly because of the transfer business that was associated with it. And there's some really interesting information about that I'd be happy to share with you if you want to go to lunch someday. So this is eleven-hundred Rhode Island Street. And then our last property this evening is on ten-twenty-eight Rhode Island Street, and it's the Parham House. And it was constructed between eighteen-sixty-nine and eighteen-seventy-three. It's also a part of the North Rhode Island Historic District that was listed in two thousand and four. It is being nominated under criterion one and six, similar to the last we've seen, because of the development of the city and also for its vernacular architecture. of the development of the city and also for its vernacular architecture with Italianate detailings. And just a quick architecture buff I have to put in, this house on the corner trims has a wood rope detail. It is very unique. We only have a few other houses that we've found in Lawrence like this. It's really a nice detail for this house. So the city commission action this evening would be to hold the public hearing, and if appropriate, adopt Ordinance 9311, 9312, 9313 for designating landmarks on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, and Ordinance 9314, designating the Johnson Block Historic District on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. And I'd be happy to stand for any comments or questions you may have.
Questions of Lynn? Lynn, when we did downtown, downtown districts, similar kind of thing to the Johnson Block, we didn't have 100%. Wanted to be participation, if I recall, correct?
Correct. And that was for the National Register of Historic Places. It's not listed on the local register, and the bar is a little bit higher for the local register to try to get more participants in the historic district.
But it was a similar kind of?
It's a very similar process.
Is it unusual to get those kind of numbers that we get? Is that pretty typical or unusual?
Well, I have to tell you, this is our first historic district in 25 years. The first one was right after the ordinance was adopted, and so this will be our second local historic district if it gets approved this evening.
Any other questions of Lynn? Don't go away.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion then to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made in second to open the public hearing was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is open. Open. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dennis Brown, President of Lawrence Preservation Alliance. As you're all aware, for a little over a year now, the LPA has been working to list on our Lawrence Register of Historic Places properties that are already listed on the state and national register. We're trying to catch up. And 1106 and 1028 Rhode Island are two more of those properties that are already within the district that is listed on state and national registers, and we're happy to work with both of those owners to bring them on to the Lawrence Register as well. But now we're moving into our new phase, which we're really excited about, and that is bringing properties to the Lawrence Register, very historic, worthy properties that aren't listed on any historic register to this point. So what we're doing is we're taking a process that's been going backwards for, ever since we started our preservation ordinance in 1988, and we're making it go the right way. The right process here is to get on the Lawrence Register first, send that documentation to the state preservation office, and get a determination if the owner wanted to go forward with state or national listing. Would that property likely be eligible? They'll sign off on that and let you know, well, you know, maybe ought to stay where you are. No, come on, try to get on the state and national. That's the way it's supposed to work. So with 819 Avalon, this is the first project that LPA is working with the homeowner in this project, I should say, that is going on the local register, the Lawrence Register, and hopes to continue on to at least the state register. Couple of brief tidbits before I go on, because there's always interesting things historically. First, 819 Avalon, owned by Olive Stanford, her daughter Mary Anderson and her husband Tripp. Those three, and with really Olive as the driving force, saved the Old English Lutheran Church at 1040 New Hampshire and did a great job. Hardly anybody knows all his role in that, very determined person to get that job done. 1106 Rhode Island, the city had a big role in taking that from where it was, which was really scary, to now something that, you know, you ask neighbors for a considerable distance around what they think of what's happened with that property. Wouldn't have happened without the city participating a little bit to get the ball rolling. 1028 Rhode Island, I've got to address this aspect, because it's something a lot of folks don't understand about historic listings. The house needed work. It was already on the state and national register, so review was in order. A new owner spotted. They wanted to do a partial demolition and a rehab. They came to HRC with a plan that, this may be one of the best plans that ever came to HRC. If HRC had tried to design a plan, could they have done any better? Two small additions that were inappropriate and were actually damaging the original house came off. A small kitchen addition was put in the back that was appropriately sized and placed. The rest of the house was carefully rehabbed. A fabulous job of working on a house that is listed and is required to have historic review. And that segues a little bit into my comments about the Johnson Block. This is something that LPA actually did not originate. We were real excited when we heard that the neighbors were working on this, and the neighbors have worked for a couple of years. It's a lot of work to form a historic district. There's a lot of documentation. It's a real process. It's not, oh, let's have a historic district. Okay. Well, it doesn't work that way. LPA came in towards the end with a $1,000 grant. That's a lot of money for us. That's all membership dollars to help finish up the documentation for the district to be nominated to the Lawrence Register of Historic Places, and the HRC recommended approval. We're real happy about that. There is one objector, and that person owns a significant property in the proposed district. And I've read his letters, one to the HRC and one to the city. Historic listing for a property owner in a district or when Environs applies, it is a trade-off. You're agreeing to a review of any permitted project that you undertake, while understanding that others around you will also have their plans reviewed when they apply for building permits. Applications for building and demolition permits are the only actions which trigger review. Anything else you wish to do to your property, you can do. Virtually all projects that undergo local review are approved, many though accept adjustments proposed by staff and HRC. This balanced process, LPA feels, increases the likelihood that a listed neighborhood maintains its context and stability. Our concern with 845 Missouri and the owner's objections is that the district, as proposed, if that was dropped from the district, could weaken the district. And if the neighbors decide to go on to state and national listing, which would give them the benefits of using the state tax credit system for rehab projects, their case there, we're concerned, could be weaker if that property, that important corner property, was not included. The possible negatives for 845 Missouri, we feel, are unlikely and very slight. I've lived in my house, which is under Environs review, for 30 years. In those 30 years, I've applied for one building permit, and I had a review. Everything else I've done to my property, which is considerable over time, no review. We think you have to take the longer view when you're deciding this item and include that structure in the district, and we hope that you will agree with the 4-1 vote taken by the HRC. Thank you.
Questions of Dennis? Thanks, Chris. Other public comment?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Arp. I live at 828 Arkansas, so I'm in the proposed district, and I'm also on my second term on the Historic Resources Commission. And I submitted a letter on this item that's in your packet, but I just wanted to reiterate a few points. This process started about four years ago, when one of Dennis Domer's graduate students asked me if she could research my house on Arkansas Street for a class project, and I said, sure. And she uncovered, I don't know how she did it, digging through Lawrence newspapers on microphone, but found the name Victor Johnson and the whole story about how he bought this pasture and envisioned this block that's become what it is today. So based on her research, I coordinated this effort on behalf of my neighbors, did some research, and with the help of LPA, we've uncovered some lost Lawrence history. And it's built a sense of community and purpose within our block, and I've met neighbors that I never knew before, and most of us now think this is a great thing for our neighborhood. And we want to thank LPA for their support. They've kind of got us over the finish line, and I would just hope that you would support the inclusion of the Johnson Block as a Lawrence Historic District as it's outlined in the packet. Thanks.
Questions of Michael? Other public comment on this side?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Aaron Bailey, 406 Missouri. I am the current Chair of the Historic Resources Commission. I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire commission, but I did want to point out a few things that I think weighed in my vote on this, and for what it's worth, and some of this might be stating the obvious. This was a tough decision. When we're looking at something like this, we are weighing individual property rights versus the collective interest of this community. And when we're looking at this, establishing a historic district, what was important for me is that the code contemplated a situation like this where maybe not everybody signs off on it. I mean, quite honestly, if every, or, you know, if a single property owner balked at the idea of historic district, we would never get one pushed through. And, you know, I think that's important when we look at, you know, we're not saying anything about the current property owners and about their, you know, might not have the ability or the desire to keep the property, you know, the way that we would all like to see it. But this isn't about this. This is about us as a community and saying, you know, we have a commodity here, and we want to protect it, not just for us, but for future generations. And, you know, that's important. And again, this was a very tough decision. When you have somebody that is not signing off on this, you know, that does weigh. But I think when we look at all of this together, one of the misconceptions about the Historic Resources Commission is that, you know, every time you want to change the color of your house or, you know, remodel your bathroom, they're going to have to come through us. That's not the case. Lynn was gracious enough to pull some stats, because, you know, quite frankly, I've been on for several years, and some of these stats predate me, but out of 134 projects, 78% of those were reviewed administratively, never even came to us and approved. Now, 181 of those came to the commission, and out of those 181 projects that came to us, only 12 were denied, which is less than 2%. I mean, we are understanding of all this, but the purpose of a historic district is, again, to try to preserve, you know, the resources that we have in our community for the future. And, you know, that's kind of what, I guess, kind of went into my decision. And again, it was a 4-1 decision, and I do not speak on behalf of the entire commission, but just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Questions? Other public comment?
I'm Steve Kenobi. I'm the co-owner of 845 Missouri, the objector. This is the former Johnson House and the key contributing property in the proposed historic district. Shortly after my wife and I moved into our home, this was July of last year, Michael Arp, my neighbor, stopped by and said that he wanted to list our property on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. He said that he would even complete the application for us, very, very gracious. I told him that I'd look into it and get back with them. And so I did my research. I looked at the financial incentives offered by the state by being on the national register, and after much thought, reasoning, et cetera, I declined to have our house listed. So no matter, he said, you know, he said that was, pardon me, he said he was going to apply for historic district status for both my block and his, you know, despite, you know, my declination. To me, it just seemed like he was determined to have our property listed on the local register, despite our feelings. The way I see it, I mean, the issue before you is this. I've already declined to have our property listed individually on the local register, despite potential financial incentives and, you know, the benefits of being in the district. You know, so the question is, is it appropriate to force my home into a historic district as a key property, despite my objection to being listed on the local register? City code does not provide a way to recognize that I don't wish to be listed. So in the spirit of compromise, I love to compromise, here's an alternative for you to consider, if you will. Allow Mr. Arp and the rest of the 68% of affirming property owners to form their historic district. In return, I would like to keep our property, I would ask for that our property be removed from both the proposed district and the Environs. Keep in mind that any existing, our future owner could be allowed to join the district at any time, should they choose. And this was noted in the HRC minutes that I was able to see. I wasn't able to, it's in that meeting. Thank you.
Steve, go back a second, you said?
Yes, sir.
You don't want to be part of the district or the Environs?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm not sure we can do that part, but anyway.
Well, it's out there.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Kenobi? Thanks. Any other public comment?
My name is Katie Welsh, 732 Rhode Island, and I was one of many, many people who worked to get the North and South Rhode Island National Historic District put in place with some pretty fabulous help from the city of Lawrence. And we had far, far more people who did not want to be in the district than these folks have. It's, part of it, I think, is educational, because people have misperceptions that this can limit what you can do with your property. And so we continually have to work on educating the public that that's not true. The other thing is that always surprises me, if you choose to live in the older core part of a city, you are choosing to live in the more historic part. And so if you choose that environment, you're moving into a historic area, and I just think it's a privilege, and people, I would love people to feel really proud that they live in a historic area. And I'm sorry that this family doesn't feel that way. Thank you.
I'm curious about this, because?
Do we have your name, sir?
Donald Southern. You know, I've been here, I was born in '58. In the history of Lawrence, there was, I forget the year, that Lawrence is approximately 25% black. I heard this a while back. And I'm curious to know the ownership of being black, you know, of these houses. And I know my dad bought our home. I was born in the 488 Indiana, and it was in the top, in the 3% of being originally built by black, owned by black, until my father sold it, you know, and it was bought by whites, you know. But that's the 488 Indiana, and that house has been remodeled. Very beautiful home. And they call that district Old West Lawrence, I believe, you know. And I remember, I think back to when they started this historic thing, Old West Lawrence, Old East Lawrence, you know, and these houses, I just, you know, curious to know, if you can dig into the record to see how many of these homes were originally bought or built by blacks, you know. And there's generations here, they go to that, you know, are from that era, you know. That's all I got to say. I'm going to watch the basketball game.
See you, Donnie. See you, Donnie.
Good evening. My name is Janet Gessner, and I'm a member of LPA and also lived in a historic county. My name is Janet Gessner, and I'm a member of LPA, and also lived in a historic home that we, for about 10 years, that we ourselves went through the process of putting that onto the historic register here locally. Also, we're in, we were in the environs already of another historic district, a national one there. And I just wanted to say, I really am excited about these properties, and it was treated recently, took advantage of the opportunity the LPA presented to do a walking tour of the Johnson Block, and, and have a guide that told us some about the houses. In fact, it was someone who helped with the nomination. And it was, it just made me so proud of our community. I have to say, thinking back to our house, I remember being terrified going through the process of, before we even had listed it ourselves, having to go through the environs process, and I was amazed how, actually, in a way, it was, it was a wonderful process. Everybody was so supportive and helpful to us, and it was quite simple, actually, as well. I just can't say enough about our wonderful old homes here in Lawrence, and I think it's the core of so much of who we are. Before I moved into the old neighborhoods, and, and I always went down and walked through them and loved the old houses, and I honestly believed that, I was amazed that there wasn't like some tax that we all had to pay here in Lawrence to help support the older neighborhoods, because I know that it's so much more costly to live in the houses. And certainly, I found that out by later buying one and working on it and fixing it up and bringing it back to, to a livable state. The home hadn't even been livable when we bought it. There's a lot of work and pride goes into these homes, and anything that we can do to help support that and, and set them up to where they can be eligible for the tax incentives later for the state and, and national districts, those incentives that exist, is wonderful as well. It really helps defray the cost of living in these older homes and maintaining them. Thank you.
Questions, Janet? Okay. Any other public comment? Anyone else? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Motion made in the second to close the public hearing was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, so, questions?
Lynn, could you talk about, I know you said the impact of not having that 845 Missouri House on it would, wouldn't bode well with the entire neighborhood historic designation. Could you talk about that a little bit more?
Yes. We're, the proposed name is the Johnson Block Historic District, and Mr. Johnson specifically chose the lot on the corner to build his house, so it would be very recognizable. It's one of the few houses that we have in Lawrence that has a really strong prairie style to it. It's, when we look at what makes a district meet those criteria, for this one, this house is truly a key component of the overall history of that district, which is so important to the listing. Also, when we've been working with the State Historic Preservation Office, and based on the research that we have for the local nomination, they have already given us a determination that this district will be eligible to move forward to the state and hopefully the National Register. So, that's a process as well, but they are approving it to go on to their review board if we complete all of the information for them. And Mr. Johnson's house was obviously a part of that approval.
So you have to, it has to be approved for the whole block, not just parts of it? Is that correct?
Correct. For this particular nomination.
Okay. Thank you.
Run that by again, that last part?
For the nomination, as it stands with you this evening, it would be for the entire block, not with the removal of that house. The Chapter 22 does give you the ability to change the boundaries. If we were going to do that, you wouldn't have to go back through the process, because it changes that criteria one. It might be something that you would want to think about. Also, I did a little research, if the, if the house were to be removed from the district, in the center of these circles is the proposed historic district. On the left is the environs of the district with all of the properties in it. If the corner property, the Johnson House that we're discussing, were removed, was removed from the district, you would see the circle, the yellow circle on the right. The overlap of those two shows this kind of turquoise color, and that is the only area that would get covered if the Johnson House were outside of the district. So, even if this house is removed from the district, then it would still be subject to environs review, and there is no, there's no provision in Chapter 22 to alter that 250-foot environs.
That was kind of my guess. Any other questions?
I got one more. So this 845 property, if they were not in, as, considered part of the block for this purpose, would they have to go through all the procedures if they redid their house or made any major changes? Would they still have to go through the HRC to do all that?
Yes, because they would be located in the-
Yeah, within the environs. Okay.
Thanks.
So being in or not, because of being in the environs, if they do something to their property that requires a permit, they have to go through the environs review, like, if they were part of the district? Is that right?
That's correct. The district review is a little bit more stringent than the environs review, just because that you're trying to keep that overall character of the district, whereas the environs review is more of a context review. But being adjacent to properties on both sides, the review for this particular property would be almost as stringent as if it were key contributing.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn. So Matt, you, you deal with property all the time. Do you ever have to go through these reviews? Is that fair?
Well, that's a, that's a big question.
Well, I'm just asking a question.
I've only had to go through it myself one time, and that was with regards to the Oak Hill Cemetery. And not to make light of the situation, but I thought it strange at the time. I didn't think anyone in Oak Hill was going to complain, so. It's a joke. No, I, you know, it's, the, ultimately, what it comes down to is that the environs area is going to affect him whether or not his house is part of it or not, you know. You know, the situation that I was involved in, my house is not designated as historic, but it falls within the environs area of an area that is designated as historic, and therefore, all of the, all of the barriers you talk about in your letter, I mean, you're correct about, about those existing, but the reality is those are going to exist for you whether or not your house is included in that area or not, simply by falling within the environs area.
Okay. You know, this is normally one of those times that I, I'd probably be one of these people that would not force somebody into something that they really don't want to be a part of, but I think they're going to be a part of it one way or another, just because of where they're at.
Right.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it.
Because even if, even if you don't adopt the whole district, even if you just did it singularly as a single house at some point, he's going to fall within that environs district.
Right. I love to be put in this position, I can tell you that. Well, I think, you know, Steve, your house is such a, such a property on such a dominant corner in this district, and, and I mean, I'm very, I'm very happy with the fact that, that you and your wife have this house and, and, you know, are wanting to do, you know, great things to be able to maintain it so that, so it's there forever in the way that it is. But there's one time that, it, it's kind of like we've got you, you know, and I hate to say that, but I think, you know, I believe, I believe in the district, and I believe in the preservation of property, and I don't see, I was pretty much certain that I couldn't let you out of the environs, you know, if I wanted to. So, I try to think, are there equal advantages for you and your property, you and your wife and your property to be in that district, the property to be in the district? And I believe it's probably, for the sake of the property, it's probably, you know, it's probably important for it to be there. But that's just me. Anyone else?
You know, I'm a real strong believer in property owner rights, so this is a little, little difficult. But the answers to, that Lynn gave us regarding, it's going to be in whether it's in or not, so to speak. So, for that reason, I'll, I, I think we should go through with it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the situation that the property owner's in. I think you're going to be affected either way, but I think it's really important for this body to support the historic preservation aspects of our community. I mean, I think we have an obligation to do that as well. I appreciate the work that the LPA has done on this and, and the Historic Resources Commission, and I, I support their conclusion.
Okay. Matt, you have anything else?
Pretty much Commissioner Larson on that, you know, that's, ultimately, if one house gets added, he's going to be affected whether he's added or not, because those environs areas are, they're quite extensive, and depending on the historical feature, they can be quite extensive, so.
Well, you know, and, and Matt, I didn't want to really put you on the spot, but you're, you're somebody, a part of this body that has to deal with this from time to time, and I was thinking that there was one time before, and, and I guess I was trying to make sure that we were assuring-
Yeah, I mean, no, for sure, my, my specific situation you bring up is exactly what the situation you'd be in. Even if we voted tonight to exclude your house from the district, your house is still in the district.
You're in.
You know, your house doesn't have to be designated as historic in order to require a historic review when you, when, when you have a triggered event like pulling a permit, so.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Now, the items that we have before us, nothing else, we've held the public hearing, and is to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9391, 9312, ordinance number 9313, for the landmark designations of 1106 Rhode Island, 819 Avalon, and 1028 Rhode Island Street, and also to designate the Johnson Block Historic District consisting of 801, 805, 809, 815, 817, 823, 825, 829, 833, 839, 845, Missouri Street, and 800, 804, 806, 818, 820, 824, 828, 832, 838, 844, 846, Arkansas Street, as a historic district on the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. Again, that item, and, you know, also to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9314, designating Johnson Block Historic District to the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. So if there's no other questions of comments, or comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt the three ordnances, four ordinances establishing all of that. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in the second to adopt the ordinances on first reading was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Bowley, or Commissioner Herbert, I'm sorry. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Thank you all very much. Okay, we are going to take about a five-minute break so we can have a discussion about where our other person might be, if we know, okay?
Should we be joining, or no? She's on. Yeah?
Okay, well, we'll figure that out. Katie Welsh, are you here? Leslie? Okay, we are going to get started again. I want everybody to know that Vice Mayor Soden has joined us by telephone. Leslie, welcome aboard. I have it noted in the minutes that Commissioner, Vice Mayor Soden joined us at about 7:14, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You bet. The next item on the agenda is consider the following items related to the Oriad Design Guidelines. And we should declare any ex parte communications that we have had. You want to do that? Do we need to do that first? Okay. Leslie, have you had any additional ex parte communications?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I have not.
I have not.
I spoke with John Jocceran, but all the information we talked about is in the public record, okay?
Yeah, I met with three members of the Oriad Residents Association today, John, Tom Burt, and Candace Davis. But all the information discussed is readily available in the Oriad Design Guidelines.
Okay. So the items that we have on the agenda, and I am not going to read. We don't have enough time. The item is to consider approving a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Articles 3, adopting the Oriad Design Guidelines. It's initiated by the City Commission on 2012 and adopt on first reading ordinance number 9211 for a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code. Okay? Jeff?
Landing Office, just a very brief presentation for you this evening. This will be very similar to the items that you saw at the work session a few weeks back. The design guidelines got their initial start all the way back in 2010 as part of the Oriad Neighborhood Plan when it was adopted. Since then, as you can see, 2011, 2012, there was public meetings and grants of reward for the guidelines' creation and process. Joint Planning Commission, Historic Resource Commission Subcommittee was established and met from 2013 to about 2015 to go through the guidelines and very tailor them down to the district itself. And public meetings were held at both HRC and PC and also with the public again in 2016 as the guidelines came back for their, they had their final revisions and tweaks and edits as they went through. So the Oriad Neighborhood Plan, this was the key action that came out of that neighborhood plan was the creation and the adoption of the design guidelines. The intent of the guidelines is to provide some greater latitude in certain areas for divi, excuse me, for density development, to guide infill development throughout the district, and to establish standards and regulate massing structures, open space, and parking throughout the area. Design guidelines do a couple of different things. The intent of these guidelines is to kind of really focus on the five you see here. It's to encourage compatible development in the area, to reduce variances, to establish consistent site developments, so kind of consistent in setbacks and massing and form of the buildings, both residentially and commercially in the area, to foster compatible architectural styles, and to retain the historic resources we have there and also retain the property values of those properties in place today. And this is just to kind of give you a recap of the districts as they stand. There are six different districts, and you can kind of see they're color-coded to match their district label on the map there. So one is mostly above Memorial Stadium. Two runs kind of along the eastern, excuse me, the western side of the district, which would be the eastern side of the university campus. Three is kind of the heart of the Oriad District if we think of it today as being the neighborhood. Four and five are adopted historic districts that are already in place there, the Hancock and the Oriad District. And the commercial district is mainly around 9th Street and just at the corner of 14th and Massachusetts is where the commercial district is located. So the process works very similarly to what we discussed previously. It is concurrent with a building permit, so the review is triggered upon the building permit being filed. If there is no building permit, then the guidelines serve it just as that, as guidelines for somebody if they like to do a best management practice or just the best practice for the property of the day. Staff does have the ability to review and approve the permits, but if staff cannot do it, then the HRC has the ability to do that. I should also just caveat and note in here, too, that the items before you this evening, while they are technically rezoning, they do not change the base zoning for any properties in the district. The rezonings apply the UC designation, which is the urban conservation overlay that'd be created with the text amendment, which is the first item this evening. So all the base zonings that are there today would stay the same. The overlay district would just be applied to them. Of course, before, the other boards I've seen is Historic Resource Commission and both Planning Commission had unanimous approval for the items this evening. I have data, be glad to stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, questions, Jeff?
On the, you said that if there's no triggering event like pulling a permit, that these serve simply as guidelines and not requirements?
Correct.
If a permit is pulled for a specific portion of a house, can that trigger other portions of the house to come under review? Case in point, if I have to pull a permit to add a kitchen off the back of a house and other parts of the structure not related to the kitchen or non-conforming, do those come under review?
No. It's only applicable to the scope of the permit. So if you're just doing the addition or the kitchen portion there, it's only that portion that would fall under review. It does not retroactively require you to bring the whole structure into compliance at that point.
Okay.
Yeah? Other questions? Let's talk about stacked parking, okay? It seems to me, and understand, we have parking requirements that we have for all of these things. Now, are we adding this new layer? It seems to me, and tell me where I'm wrong here, it seems to me that we're trying to control density by changing the rule of parking. Is that, am I just thinking wrong?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say you're thinking wrong, no. It does bring...
You have the right to tell me I am. I mean, don't worry about that.
It doesn't change, the district does not change the density of any of the properties in there. So if it's zone for RM12D, that is still in place today. It does require that parking be provided in a certain manner. If there is a limitation to it, it may be, some lots don't have the space to provide the parking as the design guidelines would outline. That's something we see a lot in apartment projects and other projects throughout the city, is sometimes the limitations of the lot is what limits the overall use of the property. So it's not, an untrue statement is just not the direct intent of the guidelines is to limit the density via parking. The guidelines are really there to give parking a little bit of a different angle for duplexes in that capacity. Anything over a duplex would automatically have to come in, when they apply for a permit, would come under the section of the code for that higher intensity use, like an apartment complex would. Single-family would have the requirement for two parking spaces. The duplexes is uniquely affected in that respect because of the amount of one bedroom per one parking space. So if the lot can contain and hold eight units and can park eight units, then it would match up wonderfully. There are probably units that would come into that non-conforming area where they currently have eight units, but if they were to modify the parking, they couldn't do the stacking, they may require six, which could be, could be the reduction that you're speaking of, yes.
Okay. And I guess the other, let's see, I want to think about this a sec.
Can I piggyback on that really quickly? Because that's actually to where my original question was going, is structures that are currently operating with stacked parking that would become non-conforming under the Oriad Guidelines. What event would it take to trigger that to fall out of compliance? I mean, if presumably the parking has nothing to do with anything within the structure, right? So would it take a complete demolition of the structure through fire in order for a non-conforming property to be required to unstack parking, so to speak?
There's a couple of different ways you can lose a non-conforming status. One is through damage greater than 60% by fire or a disaster of some sort there. The other is the discontinuation of the use. So if somebody buys a property and discontinues the use as a duplex or something like that, then you're kind of giving it up in that sense, and then you could lose a non-conforming status that way. The other item you can do is if you decide to do, as your example, there would be the demolition of the property, that would effectively lose the non-conforming status, and then you'd have to come back in conformance with the codes today. So demolition would be almost like giving up that right to the non-conformity also.
Okay. I guess where I was going to go with the other part of this is that we've had a situation here where, you know, ever since I've been on the commission, we have talked about the need for parking in Oriad Neighborhood. And, you know, now we're looking at all kinds of things up there. Does this hurt or help the parking situation in Oriad?
That's a great question. And probably in the balance, it would probably end up helping, because there are places and developments that would have to come into compliance that may not have any parking at all today, just under the way the guidelines have kind of lined out. They would have been built in the 20s or 30s, would not have had the parking, but they may have been carved up over time. This would introduce parking into those structures. There are instances where we've worked the opposite angle, where structure may require to have more parking, but then the density would decrease in the same manner. I don't have the specific numbers in which way the balance of the district would go, but in the whole, it probably has some effect in giving more parking to more areas, would be my suspicion.
Yeah. Well, I guess one of the reasons that I bring it up is that, again, for the longest time, you know, I've gone through, we need one space per bedroom, and we need this, and we need this, and we need this, and I don't want to see anybody parking in yards or in grass and all that stuff. But it seems like to me, and it seems like to me, we're cutting the parking. And I don't know why it seems like that, but it just seems like we are. Or potentially could be.
I can see where you're kind of, would take the impression of that one. If it is a certain number of units today, and there's a certain number of parking, everything that is as-is can stay as it is. It's until a change occurs that you'd have to come in with the guidelines. So if you don't touch the parking, or if you're not changing the amount of units, the duplexes, that would be really the one that would drive the angle on it, would be because of stacked parking relates to a duplex units. So it's going to be in, do those units turn over? Are they demolished outright? Do they come back in a different form? Are they reverted? There's a lot of different ways you can kind of come about with that parking angle. It's just, it's a lot of what ifs that would enter into the equation to it there.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of Jeff? Leslie, do you have any questions of Jeff, too?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone? Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, public comment on this item?
My name is Candace Davis. I'm here representing the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods, who has submitted a letter to you all. But I'm also representing myself, who, and I happen to be a resident of the Oriad Neighborhood and have been there for 18 years. And before I say, well, first I want to say we enthusiastically, land does, support this document as it's written today and has been submitted. And I'm very impressed that the Planning Commission had unanimously supported this. I want to say that there's been at least five years that have gone into this with a lot of time and energy and staff input, as well as input by the neighbors, property owners, residents. But to Mike's, the mayor makes a point about the parking. And to my mind, no, it's not going to be a problem with the parking. In fact, it will help reduce the potential of more parking. In that particular area that allows for stacked parking, that would be duplexes. But in our area, those lots are small, so there's only a very limited number of lots that could be a duplex north of the stadium. And by and large, a lot of those have already been built on, expanded to those eight unit, eight-bedroom units. So just because the area is zone duplex doesn't mean that every small bungalow can be a duplex, and certainly not an eight-bedroom duplex. So there's a requirement about lot size in the city. So essentially, that to me is a moot point now. And what we're dealing with, I think the Planning Commission is looking at this, is stacked parking off of alleys is almost impossible to navigate, even when you back out, egress, access, all of those things, very difficult. So to my mind, what we're talking about with these guidelines is protecting what's left of the neighborhood north of the stadium, the small bungalows, to allow those to be viable, to be owned by people, individuals, families, to be rental property as well, but not to be jumbo, misused, I guess, in a way. And I want to say, in light of the Johnson District that you all were talking about, I think most everybody made comments about the benefit of historic areas. To me, even this overlay district is a benefit in a sense to the historic context of our neighborhood. I think you learn so much, you have a lot of pride about living in a neighborhood like this that goes that far back. People have referred to the downtown as the jewel of our community. Well, I likewise believe that a lot of our core neighborhoods around our downtown are also jewels. And to me, having this historic overlay is a protective mechanism for that. I love living in a combined neighborhood. I'm not opposed to rentals, but I would like to see the neighborhood be improved. I don't want to see it be destroyed in some way by not making good decisions. And I think we have an opportunity here to provide some protection that will benefit our community and our neighborhood. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Other comment? Other public comment?
Hi, my name's John Davis. I'm a property owner up in Oriad. And I, while the plan has its merits, I think there needs further consideration. I, my concern is, especially with the parking and the density requirements or how they break it out in density, they have low, medium, and high, the parking requirements are the same in all three. So basically, it's going to make it all low-density. I mean, with a 50-foot lot, you get five spots. These houses are incredibly expensive to rehab, and based on that, you know, as an investor, we're not going to, we're not going to continue to deploy capital out there because it's not going to, it doesn't pencil out. So I think you ought to just take a hard look at that, the parking requirement especially, because I can tell you, I've got a couple under construction right now in Tennessee Street, and come February, when this goes into effect, those won't happen. And I think that's unfortunate, because that's a neighborhood that I believe needs investment. There's a lot of dilapidated houses, and I think that'll come to an end, so that's my point. Thank you.
Other comment?
Kyle Thompson, I'm the Chair of the Oriad Residents Association, and I want to thank all the staff that's worked on this for so long. And this parking issue in this document, as I understand it, it addresses the duplex parking, but the boarding house exception and the one parking space per bedroom is in the regular code, not in this document, right? So it doesn't change anything about the parking except for the duplexes, at times, because that's my reading.
Okay. Other comment?
Jeff, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah.
That would be correct. The parking required for congregate living or for single-family dwellings would not be modified in this extent. The congregate living is a site plan use that has to occur within certain zoning districts in the area, so that would stay the same as it is. The stacked parking and kind of referencing the guidelines there only applies to a duplex use if it'd be in the area.
Thanks.
Good evening again, it's Janet Gussner. I just wanted to say that I'm so impressed by the work that's gone into this. It's been a while since I went through the entire document, but it is just astounding. The sophistication and the nuance, the work that went into it to look at these different districts, get the sense of all the different areas in Oriad, and really respect each area for what it was and incorporate that into the document, is just really amazing to me. Again, having lived in Oriad for about 10 years a while back, this was, I think this tool will just be so useful in helping stabilize the entire neighborhood and help actually bring benefit to our community. neighborhood, and help actually bring benefit to our community, and certainly to the neighborhood. As with the Johnson block, I don't know that it's possible to make 100% of people happy all the time. I think this document and this approach really strikes a good balance in that we're grandfathering in. If I'm understanding correctly, the property is pretty much as they exist, and the parking as it exists. And this discussion about the stacked parking is one of my larger concerns when I lived in the neighborhood. It's something that, for folks who are looking to live long-term in a neighborhood, it's a large detriment. The, and if any of you have walked through that area, and particularly walked through the alleys in the duplex area there north of the stadium, it's just a haphazard sort of development. And then you have these cars stacked and parked all over. It's very, to me, discouraging to try to bring in long-term ownership and pride into the neighborhood. And it only encourages perhaps a sort of mindset of just coming in and using this for investment and getting money out of it. I think this will really help improve the livability, the attractiveness of that area. And it also is, the concern about the stacked parking, another concern I have is having neighbors that have gone through this. When I lived in the neighborhood, it also makes it very difficult for the folks living in those homes, if often, when you have this stacked sort of parking going on, and can actually be a danger at times. Overall, I really wanted to mainly just thank you for your patience in dealing with this, and everyone else in the hard work that's gone into it, and all the commissions that have listened to it and supported it. And I hope that you'll support it tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Anyone? Okay. Back to the commission. So Jeff, according to the minutes, we're getting ready to consider changing the duplex parking citywide, right? I've got a planning commissioner who says that we're going to do it, just not in Oreyed. Is that right?
That's correct. It's under consideration. It'd be for all of Chapter 9, which implies citywide.
Really?
And that's just for duplexes, right?
Article 9, the parking section of the Development Code, has been under work for a number of years. And as part of that, the Planning Commission has asked us to look at specifically, considering whether we should implement that, the lack of tandem spaces for duplexes throughout the city. It has not yet gone back to the Planning Commission. And, you know, there are a number of different scenarios that we could look at. It could be based on, you know, maybe you can have tandem parking for duplexes that are a certain size, but if they're over a certain number of bedrooms, maybe you don't have that tandem. We're going to bring a number of things back. I think one of the things also would be to look at duplexes that have alley access versus duplexes that are standard suburban, you know, driveway access. And we might have some different standards for a variety of different ways that duplexes are built throughout the community.
Okay. And are those changes that may or may not come forward, do they mirror what is being recommended in Oreyed?
They haven't fully been drafted, and the Planning Commission hasn't actually discussed them in detail yet. I would suspect that the template that is in these guidelines would be the template that we would bring forward for an alley scenario, rather than reinvent that. But that may not be the only way we would deal with how parking for duplexes is provided throughout the city.
Still there, Leslie?
I am.
You have anything?
No, no questions.
Well, this has been a long process for the neighborhood. I know that. Five, six, seven years, I believe I heard. And I know a lot of work's been put into it from neighbors, as well as folks who do the building and the contracting. I'm in support of this, of the Oreyed neighborhood design. I think it's going to, a good step forward in protecting that entire area.
Okay. Leslie, you have anything?
I think it's time to move the guidelines ahead.
Okay. Gentlemen?
I just want to thank the members of the Oreyed Residents Association that met with me today. It was a very good conversation. I think one of the, one of the things that I took away from it was that ultimately, you know, when we had our work session, I had some disagreements with some very minute points within this. You know, there were some little things that I kind of thought were micromanagement at its finest, you know, that the spindle width on porch railings, and the fact that, you know, porches had to be painted and not stained. And, you know, I still think it's a little bit micromanaged for my taste, but ultimately, the ultimate principle of the matter is very effective. And, you know, Jeff offered some reassurance tonight, just that ultimately, we're not going to, we're not going to attack what is already there so much as plan for the future with, you know, if there's a triggered event, pulling a permit, a complete devastation, a demolition, that at that point, it would be triggered. But largely, I think people are still going to retain their individual property rights, you know, that ultimately, I can still work on my front porch by myself without pulling a permit. And so, you know, I think I can probably, in my mind, get past some of the, some of the levels of micromanagement that normally sets me off and support this.
Okay.
Well, some of your words spoke to me tonight, Mayor. You said, "for the longest time." And it seems like this has been going on for quite some time. There've been a lot of people who've paid attention to it and tried to shepherd it through the process. I appreciate that we have unanimous approval from our advisory boards. I think that's a good sign, and I support this.
You know, it's the big salary that comes along with this part of the job. You know, there's just something here that tells me that we're missing something. And one of my main concerns has to do with, you know, the properties, the, you know, the really large properties, and whether or not people are going to really be able to afford to get in there and do some of these things, and without having, you know, just deterioration to continue to happen, and whether people make investments in them, whether it be through multiple family situations, or it be through, you know, somebody wants to buy it for a single family. And I just think, you know, we can restrict, we can restrict things too many different ways. I just have a little, I have a lot of concern about that, but golly, moly. I don't know. And then the parking, and I appreciate you clearing that up, Jeff. I really do. But I just, I think it's going to come back. I just know there's something here that I'm missing, and I don't know what it is. But anyway, I can count, too. So anyway, rather than continue to do this. Okay. I guess I have a hard time supporting something that I really just, my stomach tells me, you know, there's just something here. But anyway, that's just me. Okay. The item that we have before us then is to approve the text amendment to the City Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Article 3, adopting Oreyed, I'm sorry, and adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9211. That is the first one. Okay? And then you want these taken in two different deals, Sheila? Okay. So the first one that we have is the text amendment. So I'd entertain a motion to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9211.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt ordinance number 9211 on first reading. It was made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Bowley. You heard the motion, didn't you, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes four to one. Mayor Amick's in opposition. Second item is to approve the rezonings and adopt on first reading. The rezonings are Z-12-00172, Z-12-00175, Z-12-00173, and Z-12-00174, and Z-16-00058. And I would entertain a motion to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9212, 9213, 9214, 9215, 9216, and 9217. Entertain that motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Leslie, you voted in favor?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. So it passes four to one with Mayor Amick's, the dissenting vote. Thank you all very much. Thanks, staff, for all of the work, and thanks to the neighborhoods for all of the hard work that they put in on this. Next item is to conduct a public hearing regarding Pioneer Ridge and Pioneer Ridge Center Benefit Districts, and consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9310, levying the assessments for the benefit district. Chuck?
Good evening. What you have before you tonight is basically the results, the final estimates, assessments for the Pioneer Ridge and Pioneer Ridge Center. Business association, really, it's not an HOA, but Mesa Way between Lawrence Avenue and Frontier is a private street. They came, they approached the petition back in April of 15 to get repairs made. The city did the work this summer. We established the benefit district. The work is completed. All the property owners have been notified. You set the public hearing date on October 18th. And so basically, tonight is your public hearing. You should open for public comment, and pending any comments, then pass the ordinance 9310, which will basically give us authority to assess the cost back onto the tax rolls. The process goes after tonight. We'll bring it back for a second reading. We'll publish it. We'll send final notices out to all the property owners. Once again, we'll give them 30 days. They can either pay it in full, or we'll put it on the tax roll if they don't take any action. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Chuck? Okay. You entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to open the public hearing on this item. It was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is open. Passes five zero. So any public comment on this item? Any public comment? You entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing, made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments? Simple assessment going back. I would entertain a motion to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9310.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9310, was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Next item is consider approving economic development funding agreements between the City of Lawrence and the Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Lawrence and the Biosciences and Technology Business Center. Diane?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Earlier this evening on the consent agenda, you passed support for various agreements that were funded in the 2017 budget with various outside agencies. These are the two agencies with which the city has an agreement for Economic Development Services. And a number of the changes that were made with regard to all of the agreements apply to these. But there were a couple of additional ones that I just wanted to highlight. The agreements here require segregation of funds related to economic development, and I think overall provide a greater transparency, which was one of the aspects that we were trying to achieve with the updates to both of these agreements. Otherwise, these are our regular agreements we've had for a number of years with both the Chamber and the BTBC. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do see that Larry McElwain is here in the audience, and he may wish to comment on behalf of the Chamber as well.
Okay. Questions of Diane?
So the only big difference from previous ones is the requirement to have separate funding, to maintain separate books, essentially?
Yes. And then, as we have in other agreements, we have a requirement of accounting for funds. And then we also have a requirement for an annual report. Again, those are requirements that are available in other agreements. One thing I didn't add is, with regard to the BTBC, it's outlined in the agreement here, there is some additional funding that you approved with the 2017 budget, which is this establishment of this Economic Development Incentive Fund. And the agreement with BTBC has a specific attachment with regard to that fund, how it would be administered, and that that fund would be segregated and also be required to roll over.
Okay. Any questions? Special thank you to Diane for all the work that she put in on these agreements. I understand that you made them so I could even understand them, right?
We had a lot of help with the entities as well, so they worked hard on this as well.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment on this item? Larry, you have anything?
Good evening. I'm Larry McElwain. I am the President and CEO of the Chamber of Lawrence, as well as President of the EDC of Lawrence and Douglas County. I really appreciate the process by which this was all done. Diane did a super job and gave us opportunities to comment and give our suggestions on this. You'll see in your packet a letter that I signed. I don't need to stand here and read that to you, but I just want the public to know that's listening in that we support this agreement. We ask for its adoption. We think it will create more transparency. That's been called for. We really do appreciate the partnership that we have with the city and the county, and the university. We also have some private investors, and we're working on that part of it right now. There is a real commitment from private investors in the area to help with the partnership. And I think it should be known that one of the reasons that private partnership are interested in helping us is because they know the city and the county are also helping. And I think it'd be more difficult for us to raise funds if it was just, you know, just us. And they see the value to the city, the county, and to the university for all of us to be working together. So, again, we totally support this agreement. We think it will be good. We will give at least one report to you a year, probably two. It's required for one, but we may do two reports, because we do report to our private investors a couple times a year. So we'll probably include the private investor information with also what we do with the city and the county. We do anticipate there will be an agreement with the county also. That will probably take more shape after the first of the year. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity, and thank you So again, thank you very much for this opportunity, and thank you for helping us to forge something that is to the benefit of everyone, especially the people of Lawrence and Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Back to the Commission, and anybody have any questions, anybody?
I think, I think both documents are really spot on. I appreciate the work that everybody involved has done on these, and I think, you know, it's been a little bit of time coming, but it's something that really needed to be done and by able to follow their money. So anyway, I think it works well. Anyone else?
One thing I might highlight for the community that's maybe not aware of it is just that the money going to BTBC is going to be, I mean, you want to talk about areas in which the city could economically develop. This is an incubator for not just any jobs, but we're talking about pharmaceutical. These are high paying, incredibly high wage, you know. Lisa, you had a question about benefits earlier, you know, and well, I can't really make a promise one way or the other. We're not dealing with an incubator for restaurant jobs here. We're dealing with an incubator for very, very high wage jobs. And I had the opportunity this last week to attend the G Pen Conference that it's a, it's an international conference that was held in Lawrence this last week, and it was actually funded in part by the transient guest tax grant. But this brought three hundred pharmacy, it's, it's the globalization of pharmaceuticals educators network, and it brought three hundred individuals from, I think, four continents into Lawrence, Kansas, and they descended upon Mass Street and were at the Eldridge Hotel when I found them. And one of the high point, I tell you all this because one of the, in between various conferences, one of the, the high points of this was that they were given tours of different parts of Lawrence, and one of the key spots on their tours, they told me, was they were showing all of them BTBC as an incubator to grow future pharmaceutical businesses. And I think we have a huge opportunity with BTBC. And I know that that's obviously not new to any of you, but I think we have, we haven't even truly understood how big of an opportunity we have there. That, that has the opportunity to truly blow up into monumental jobs for this community. And so if nothing else, I think that's got to be something that, that we continue to support.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I strongly support it, that's for sure.
It's a big deal, big deal. Anyway, okay, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to approve the economic development funding agreements between the City of Lawrence and Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Lawrence and the Bioscience and Technology Business Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you all very much. Next item is consider authorizing staff to negotiate a service agreement with Desmond Design Management for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive study of the parking system serving downtown East Lawrence neighborhood and neighborhoods surrounding University of Kansas, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Brandon?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If you give me a moment, I'm just going to pull up my PowerPoint here. Okay, so the requested action tonight is pretty simple. It's to simply authorize staff to negotiate the agreement and, and execute the agreement upon successful negotiation. But I did want to take a few minutes, take the opportunity to kind of discuss what got us to this point, and then sort of the roadmap for this project. I want to be as transparent as possible with it and make sure that we all kind of know what we're getting ourselves into, because it'll be a project that, that will potentially have a pretty significant impact on our community in a very positive way, but parking is always a touchy issue, and it's always very personal. And so, so I just want to be upfront about, about the roadmap for this project and how we're going to get to the final, final product. The selection committee for the consultant selection process, and this is the same committee that'll, that'll serve as the project steering team throughout the project. It's our internal staff from, there's a representative, I didn't put each person's name on there, but a representative from each of the departments that touches parking in, in some form. Plus, KU has been very gracious and lent us the services and expertise of Donna Holtie. She's their parking services and transit director as well. So she, she brings a great wealth of expertise and experience to our project team, so we're really happy to have her on board. Plus, I think that helps sort of the cohesiveness between making changes to our system and making, making it work and integrate with their system as well on the KU side. So just a synopsis of the process. We advertised nationally. I sent emails to probably two dozen firms to try to get a really competitive bidding process for this, or proposal process. Received four, four qualified proposals. The price proposals range from fifty-one thousand to about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. Seems like a big discrepancy. I wasn't too surprised to see that. And I, I feel like we have a very good cost proposal with Desmond's proposal. They're a very well-qualified firm, and they were one of two firms that we brought into interview, and both, both firms were very, very competitive, very impressive. But we, we ended up going with Desmond as our recommended firm to move forward with.
Okay.
Just kind of an overview of the roadmap for the project. This is the geographical scope. When I presented the, the request to issue the RFP about two months ago now, KT was, was observant enough to point out that East Lawrence was not listed on the, the list of neighborhoods that we'd be looking at. It was always included in this map. This was the map for, that was attached to the RFP. But I wanted to present the map just to visually confirm for everybody that, that East Lawrence will be in there, plus the other neighborhoods surrounding the University of Kansas, and then our downtown district right there. So that represents our project scope. This is probably too much detail to get into at the moment, but this is just a roll-up Gantt chart of the project, the project map. And that, that is in detail in the, the proposal that was attached to the memo on tonight's agenda. So just kind of an overview, we're talking about four phases of this project. The first phase, phase is outreach and an environmental scan. So this is where the consultant is really going to get familiar with Lawrence, research, the existing laws, the data, operations, the way that we operate, our, our policies, our practices. They're going to do some benchmarking of comparable communities, and we get to dictate what those communities are. We'll work then, work with the consultant to determine what those communities are. I've already received some feedback from folks in the community about comparable cities that we might want to look at, so I've appreciated that input as well. This is also the phase where we'll really start to get into stakeholder and citizen engagement. I sort of highlighted a few groups that we'll be focusing on. For stakeholders, the City Commission obviously would be one of the first groups. And, and we can either conduct meetings in small groups, either individually or, or groups of two, or we could, we could get your feedback as part of a work session. So we'll be communicating about, about how you may want to provide your feedback on the front end of this process here shortly. The other group is our downtown stakeholders. These are going to be the business owners, the employees, and residents. Obviously, obviously, all of they, all of their interests on the, on the business and employee side also includes customers. I think we'll be able to capture a lot of the customer perspective there in point D with our broader community engagement efforts. The, the other group that I wanted to point out was our neighborhood stakeholders. There's a lot of residential neighborhoods involved in this geographical scope. So right now, we'll, we're planning on meetings with neighborhood associations, residents, tenants, there's a lot, a lot of renters in those neighborhoods as well. Property owners, businesses, there's, there's a few businesses scattered throughout, and it's important that they have, they have parking as well. We also want to engage KU students, and, and obviously, KU Parking and Transit Services is involved in the project, but we want to make sure that, that they're engaged as a stakeholder as well. We, we see KU students potentially being impacted quite a bit by this project if there are any types of changes to, to parking, especially in the Oriet neighborhood. So we're, we're going to take on that, that issue right from the beginning. And then I, I would point out that we'll be doing, probably through our website, I think that's probably going to be the most effective and, and also cost-effective method. We'll be doing polling and, and surveying of the broader community as well. The second phase of the project is the system analysis. So this is where we're going to be looking at the inventory, characterizing it, looking at, at the types of utilization and the, and the demand for our parking inventory. The consultant's going to conduct peak occupancy surveys. So they're going to come here physically, they're going to pick a weekday and a weekend, and our, our steering team is going to work with them on identifying those particular dates. So we want to do it, certainly in schools and session. We have the holiday shopping season coming up downtown, so I think that's going to be a good, good time to look at some, some peak demand. And we'll try to, we'll try to normalize it, so we wouldn't want to schedule it around any events like the, like the Christmas parade or anything like that. We're going to, the consultant's going to look at all of that data and then identify localized and generalized areas where we currently have parking deficits and surpluses. And then we're going to go to the third phase, which is the demand assessment and the scenario planning. So this is where I think it gets really fun, and where the data will really help us start to develop some of the solutions that we, that we work through and the strategies that we work through for the final plan. So I, we're going to, we're going to get sort of planning horizons, projection horizons of short-term, one to five years, and long-term, six to ten years. You know, the disclaimer is that when you do any type of planning with, with a six to ten-year horizon, it gets kind of fuzzy. But I think there's going to be some really, really tangible changes and strategies that we can talk about in that one to five-year horizon in particular. So the development assumptions that the consultant will look at include a lot of, a lot of infill-type development activity. So with that, maybe you see the loss of existing parking conversion buildings to, to more parking intense uses, maybe a mixed use, or more dense residential use, and those types of infill development trends. And then we're going to run to basically two scenarios. One is with, it's more of a status quo scenario where we might have some minor policy changes, some minor time changes and, and pricing changes, but not a whole lot of significant intervention in, in terms of changes to our parking system. Then we're going to look at another scenario, which is more of an aggressive intervention up to and including transportation demand management, which is, which is very, very progressive type solutions that really integrate multimodal transportation and, and view and, view and operate the parking system as an extension of your transportation system. You know, we have heard suggestions, for example, of downtown circulators with our transit system, or, you know, or trolleys and that sort of thing. And so that's more of what kind of a TDM approach would look like. So we'll get a couple different scenarios, and then what that is working towards is point three, where we were able to start forecasting sort of, sort of the future surplus and deficit conditions, and, and the types of interventions and the timing of those interventions over the next one to, one to five years in particular. Phase four of the project is our strategic implementation plan. This is the, the classic consultant report. So we're going to be really, really fleshing out the solutions and the initiatives and the timeline. So you'll, you'll get, you'll get a whole menu of options and, and costs and revenue impacts for those options. They'll also look at feasibility. I think one of the, one of the things that really stood out with this particular firm and this consultant team, I think, is their ability to, to read the politics of issues, to read, to read sort of the, the community's goals and values. And I think that they're going to be able to give us a pretty honest and objective opinion of what will and won't work for, for our community, and, and do that, you know, as an outsider who doesn't necessarily have, have a stake in, in it. Some of the other communities that this consultant worked, worked in, in particular, are very progressive and, and sort of town-in-gown type communities, so they're very familiar with some of the dynamics that we're facing in particular as, as a community. This is, I, one thing I wanted to point out was just that the, the consultant will take back the recommendations before the final report, take it back to the actual stakeholder groups that they, that they met with at the front end of the project, at the beginning of the project. I like that from a citizen engagement model, stakeholder engagement model, because it provides a feedback loop where we can really test and make sure that we got it right. And then, of course, the, the final plan will be presented, and, and the City Commission will be asked to accept or adopt the, the final report, and then we'll work on implementation after that for the years to come. I did, one of the things that really stood out to the selection team was the format of the consultants' reports in other communities. It's very, it's very logical, very, very pointed recommendations where, where you can really see, you know, what we'll need to be doing as a community to make these types of changes, both from a policy perspective and operations perspective, maybe a pricing perspective and education perspective. So it's, it seems like the, the work plan that we'll get really will be an operational guide, and that's, you know, from the staff standpoint in particular, that's what we're really hoping to get. So that's the extent of my presentation. I'll stand for any questions. I'm sure we probably have some, some comments as well from the public, so.
Any questions?
So this will solve our parking situation?
That was my question.
Completely, I say yes then.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's a good point. I, I think one of the, one of the great values is going through the exercise, and that's what our community hasn't really done. And we, you know, we've got, we've got some phenomenal parking facilities. You know, you look at the three garages in our downtown, they're very good facilities, especially our new Vermont Street garage. But, you know, we haven't really, we haven't really jumped over the edge, jumped off the cliff, and dove into, into parking management necessarily. So this will, this will move us forward, and it'll, it'll be, it'll be a growing process for the whole community, I think.
Other questions? Okay. I can see us having to change every report we have after this comes back. I can just feel it coming. Public comment? Any public comment? Not even on starting the process? Okay. If not, back to the Commission?
Brandon said he was excited, and that's good enough for me.
Okay. Well, I hope that it is a very useful tool. I hope it's not one of those reports that end up sitting on a shelf back here somewhere that we're just paying money for, to, you know, to not have something that we can't use. And parking is a problem, you know, in and around our neighborhoods, and, you know, part of this is the neighborhoods up and around the university. We just dealt with part of the, what we think is part of that parking problem tonight earlier. I, you know, I just, I, I hope that this is able to do all that, so. Anyway, I'm on board.
I'm liking the idea that we're looking at it comprehensively for the, probably the first time ever, ever, I would assume, for the City of Lawrence. So I'm very excited about that. I've been looking forward to this.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I would entertain a motion, then, we authorize staff to negotiate, you know, the service agreement with Desmond Design Management and the city manager to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for that authorization, made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Bowley. Questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Got it. Passes five zero. Tony, can we go ahead and take the bottom items, or do we have to stay in an order? I don't know if people are here for those. I mean, they're non kind of public items, but.
No, you can.
Finish that up. Okay. Let's go on. Are there any Commission items? Anything, Lisa?
I don't.
Got anything, Leslie?
No, I don't.
Okay. City managers provided us with a memo that's pretty straightforward. You know, if there's something that you all want to talk about in the future, let me know, or let city manager know, I guess that would be better. Okay. That was all the city manager's report, wasn't it? Diane?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then calendar items?
There are a, a few things that I would like to highlight. One is we placed a paper in, in your spot there.
I've been trying to avoid this, you know, and now it's, now it's time to do it.
These retreat dates. So as part of the strategic planning, there will be a need to have some meetings with the consultants, both in January and in February, and And we had asked about availability for these dates, and Danielle helped compile this information. Based on what we saw, it looks like maybe the best day would be this first option on the January, which is the half a day on Friday and the full day Saturday, and then the Monday, February 20th. But I wanted you all to take a look at this and see if that would work and with hopes of being able to get these dates on the calendar.
You know, I know, Matt, you have a hard time getting off on days during the week sometimes. Is the half-day Friday and then the full-day Saturday seem to work the best for you on that one?
Yeah.
I'll make it happen. It'll cost me a fortune, but I, my wife will probably like it because I'll be off. Anyway, no, that's fine.
Excellent.
But you got to give me the 20th.
Yeah, I could do that.
Ah, there we go. Everybody on board on that?
Yep.
We can make it work.
Called cat skinning.
Appreciate that. We'll add those to your calendar and get that set. The other things that I just wanted to highlight for you, we did add an item, the Star Community Rating Score Announcement Celebration. So we'd like to have an unveiling of that on Tuesday, November the 29th, at 4:00 p.m. at the Lawrence Public Library, if you're able to go.
You think that's about an hour long or so?
Yes, or shorter.
Okay.
So it calls for celebration. And the other thing, I just wanted to make sure to extend an invitation to you, is the City Employee Appreciation Lunch, Tuesday, December 6th, 11 to 1, that you see there. We'd love to have you come if you're available. And finally, on behalf of staff and the community, next week is Thanksgiving. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who serve. You all do an outstanding job and spend so many hours in dedication to your positions. We really appreciate you.
Yeah. Very nice to say that, Diane, but the people that do the real work are you and, you know, the staff. I mean, you guys, like I said many, many times, I'm not a first responder. They don't call the mayor to show up at some of the things that you all have to do.
Mike's just a pretty face.
Just another face in the crowd, but no, I appreciate everything that you do and, you know, do our community. I know we've been going through a time in the last week, but you know, the truth of matter is, is we need to have a good Thanksgiving. You know, look after your neighbors, ask your neighbors over. I mean, you know, what's wrong with that? Just do it. Kind of get to know them, you know? It's a real deal. Shoot, let's show them what it's really like. It's Lawrence, Kansas. You know, we know how to do it right. I mean, we really do, so.
If you're so inclined, Just Food has some volunteer openings for their Thanksgiving for the community, as well as I'm sure Link is probably doing something. So if you want to do that, I'm going to, I plan on doing that, so I think it's a good thing to do, give you an opportunity to see what goes on in the community.
Yep. Okay. So that's all the calendar?
I got a calendar, Adam.
What you got?
Friday morning, I think it's 7:45, is the Live Well Community Event. No, it's Friday.
It's Friday, 7:30.
Yeah, 7:30, okay. I think, wait, it's Elite Center?
Mm-hmm.
And I think everybody's invited, so.
You going to be there?
I'm planning on it.
I plan on it.
Yeah. See what I can do, I don't know.
So if we could add that to the calendar and let folks know that that's where it is.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so that's all the calendar. So the last item that we have, then, Tony, do we really need 70 minutes? You and I talked before, is 45 appropriate? If it does go longer, we can extend, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I would recommend to the commission we talk about 45 minutes, okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so the item before us, then, is to consider a motion to recess to executive session for approximately 45 minutes for the purpose of consultation with attorneys for the city deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. Justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client matters confidential at this time. City Commission will resume its regular meeting in the city commission room at the conclusion of the executive session. I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session for approximately 45 minutes and upon return, direct staff, if appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to recess into executive session for 45 minutes by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, we are in executive session.
Thanks, Leslie.
Okay, Leslie, you here?
Yep, I do.
Okay. Okay, after consultation with our attorneys, I would entertain a motion to direct staff to release a report tomorrow that the city recently received from the accounting firm of Allen Gibbs and Houlike concerning the 12th and Oriad Tax Increment Financing District redevelopment agreement between the city and Oriad NLC. I would entertain that motion.
Somu?
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there any questions? Okay. Motion made in second to approve that motion was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero. The second part of this is I would also entertain a motion to direct the city's attorneys to file the appropriate court documents to take action against Oriad NLC and related parties. I would entertain that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. Do we want to make comment about Brad? All comments?
Sure. In accordance with your direction tonight, we will take those actions. If there are any questions, we will direct those to Brad Russell, special attorney that we have hired to help us with this matter, and I can provide that information to persons upon request.
Okay. Okay. So, with that, thank you, staff. Thanks for all your hard work. I would, again, wish to file the appropriate court documents to take action against Oriad NLC and related parties. I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for adjourn is made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are adjourned. It's passed unanimously.
Thanks, Leslie. Have fun. Learn a lot. Okay, I will.